Good afternoon and welcome to this public hearing for the Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services Committee. I'm Councilmember, President Pro Tem Priscilla Tyson, Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, and I am welcomed by Councilmember Michael Stenziano and Councilmember Elizabeth Brown for thanking for joining this hearing today. Before getting started, I wanted to make everyone aware this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, on Columbus' government television channel three. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. The purpose of this afternoon's hearing is to share with the public information about the programs and services provided by the various city-funded social service agencies. We enjoy a high quality of life in the city of Columbus, and that is marked with innovation and collaboration. However, even the greatest cities have challenges. We do have our challenges, and we need to make sure that our residents have the resources and services that they need to better their lives. We are well-positioned to address many of the needs of our residents because we have a strong infrastructure of governmental, nonprofit, and private-sector resources and organizations that are dedicated to offering services that are vital to our community. This afternoon, we will hear from the city-funded social service agencies who are doing important work for our residents. Within the next several weeks, nearly all the recipients of city contracts for social services will testify at a public hearing. Approximately half of the organizations will be testifying today, and the remaining organizations will testify at our hearing scheduled for Wednesday, March 16th, at 3:30 p.m. After our guests have testified, we will entertain testimony from members of the public who have submitted speaker slips for this hearing. Before beginning with testimony, I'd like to cover one ordinance that will, from the Auditor's Office, that we were unable to include in our bi-weekly legislative hearing last week. To provide a summary of the ordinance, we have Income Tax Administrator Melinda Frank. Melinda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. I am presenting information with regard to ordinance number 0530-2016, and it's with regard to authorizing the modification to increase and expand the scope of services for a contract currently in place with specialized business services for the further development of an additional phase in our online filing for individual taxpayers as it is integrated with our workflow and imaging application. It's long been the goal of the Income Tax Division to have an e-file application specifically for individual taxpayers. E-filing has been available for employers for payment of tax and filing of forms related to employee withholding for about the last eight years. After several years of development and testing, our e-file for individuals was finally placed online, giving taxpayers this year, for the first time, the ability to file their individual returns online, as well as providing for the unique capability of uploading documents that would attend that form. And actually, we've had some good comments so far, a little bit of growing pains with people who are using the application now. But as with any application that goes online, we have found that there are enhancements that would benefit not only the taxpayers but also our office in facilitating the processing of the information. And we have provided to our developer a list of 13 tasks that they have developed an SOW for, and we have ranked them by highest priority. And we feel that by passing this legislation and authorizing the expenditure of the funds and the modification of the contract to include the most recent SOW, that the developers will have an opportunity to actually get some of these changes online for the filing season, although we are receiving refund requests now. Most people who have to pay a tax are not filing until the last minute. So, we feel that we have until mid-April. And this year, because of the federal government extending their filing deadline until April 18th for the emancipation holiday, we will not have our filing until the 18th. So, we have a little bit extra time to get these things before our users. And it is this increase, modification and increase of about $207,000 that we are requesting authority for. We've had a longstanding contract with these developers, basically since 2006, following an RFP process, and they have worked very closely with us. And now, as I said, we're in our fourth phase of this process, and we are very satisfied with them.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. I'm excited about being able to offer e-filing to individual taxpayers. And certainly, as we certainly promised our residents when we asked for the income tax, that we would continue to look for efficiencies within our business. And so, this would obviously be one of those efficiencies to make sure that, one, individuals don't have to necessarily do this job, they can do other work while they're here, working at the city. But it also is really an ease for our, for those residents to be able to file online. So, I appreciate the work of the Auditor's Office, excited about it. And I, it was important that we did this today because we do want individuals to be able to continue, to use this filing for this season. So, thank you for being here, and hopefully my colleagues will approve this legislation on the...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Thank you for your accommodation also today.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any questions, my councilmembers? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. Now, I would like to transition to Hannah Jones from the Department of Development, who will provide a brief explanation of the legislation for the social service contracts.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Tyson, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Stenziano. Today's hearing is to focus on several pieces of legislation, a number of ordinances that represent a significant commitment by the city of Columbus to our social service organizations and residents. In 2014, we moved over to a competitive human service funding process. We provide approximately $4.1 million through this competitive process, and the organizations and programs that you will hear represented today, as well as at the next hearing, I highlight the programs that received this award. There are three priority areas that we are focusing on. The first is a safety net, which addresses the emergency and basic needs of our residents. The second is economic success, which focuses on employment and self-sufficiency programming. And the third is social success, which focuses on safe and healthy individuals, relationships, as well as neighborhoods. Moving into the second year, which we are in, 2016 will be focused on building the capacity of these organizations and programs as they move forward. We have worked very carefully and closely, Kim Stans, our program manager, to create outcomes that are achievable so that we can show success. And moving into the third year, have a benchmark to very critically look at how we are serving the residents of Columbus. It is anticipated that next year, we will have both the third year of funding for these applicants, as well as begin to evaluate if we will move forward with another funding cycle in 2018. So, with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. The only question I'm going to ask is, based upon the initial outcomes that each of the organizations stated that they were going to achieve, my question to you is, have they, are they on track to achieve those successes as they outlined in their, in their initial application?
I would say that the majority of them, we are seeing that they are on track. Yes, we do have some where the ramping up, because we did allow for new programming and just not necessarily ongoing programming, has taken possibly more time than anticipated, and we are trying to very closely monitor that and work on improvement plans that allow them to meet the outcomes that they have put forward.
Thank you. So, when they're presenting today, they'll share their outcomes based upon what their applications, what they apply for in the application, correct?
Yes, and/or what, as they have been modified throughout the year. So, they report when they submit invoices on a quarterly basis. So, we have continued to ensure that the outcomes that are put together do meet the goals that they are setting, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. And so, each of the organizations should see their names on the monitors, and you can just start lining up. We have three minutes to make your presentation. The buzzer will go off. If it goes off in three minutes and you're close to ending, we'll still let you just finish up with that part of your report to us. Also, if you have two programs, that means you have three minutes for each of your programs, because a number of you have two funding streams, well, not two funding streams, the two programs being funded by these dollars. And so, with that, we're ready to start. Our first program is the Columbus Urban League, and Ms. Toni Cunningham is the speaker. Good afternoon.
President Pro Tem Tyson, to Councilmember Stenziano and Councilmember Brown, thank you for having us this afternoon. I'm going to stick to my script so I can stay in my timeframe regarding two initiatives that the city currently funds at the Columbus Urban League, one being our Choose to Change reentry program, and the other being our Father to Father program, which focuses on fatherhood services and helping to create nurturing fathers. So, first, I'll start with Choose to Change. The Choose to Change program helps ex-offenders become restored citizens and better individuals through supportive services that enable them to develop successful reentry strategies for self-improvement and change. Some of the benefits of being in the program include case management for life coping skills, assistance with driving privileges, letters of recommendation or support, employment assistance and job readiness, and being able to connect them with the community, other community resources. In 2014, 6,972 African-Americans were incarcerated. In 2015, 6,866 African-Americans were added to that population. In the last three years, our program has served over 300 young men with a recidivism rate of less than 8%. It is critical that we continue to serve these young men so that they can receive the tools and resources they need to help eliminate barriers that can cause them to reoffend. Some of our partners in our work include United Way, which we're grateful for their support. We also have a number of community partners that we partner with, which include the Alvis House, Columbus State Community College, Franklin County Child Support Enforcement Agency, Columbus Literacy Program, Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles, the Central Ohio Minority Business Association, Southeast Mental Health, Godman Guild, Ohio Benefit Bank, and the Touch Program. Choose to Change is structured as a 10-week program that meets for two and a half hours one day a week. We offer classes on Tuesday evenings and on Thursday mornings, depending upon the schedule of the individual. The next orientation we have is April 1st. We do four cohorts a year, and they go, as I said, for 10 weeks, and then we have a major graduation at the end for, to celebrate these men, and also to offer them the next level of service, which includes alumni groups that they can participate in. So, that's the Choose to Change initiative. Didn't know if anybody had any questions, or, yes.
Do you also serve women, or is there a different program that they can access, Women Ex-Offenders?
So, we currently don't serve Women Ex-Offenders under Choose to Change, which falls under our African-American Male Initiative. However, we have an initiative in our Workforce Division called Transitions, which is also focused on reentry workforce, and we serve women through that initiative.
Thank you. I have another question. One of your outcomes is to have 35 participants between the ages of 12 and 18 attend 12, seven Urban Warrior sessions.
So, we, Urban Warriors is one of those, as Ms. Jones mentioned, that we were struggling to retool and restart. So, we're happy to say that, based on a relationship that we now have with the Kerwin Institute around I Am My Brothers Keeper, we have now hosted two sessions of Urban Warriors where we've had approximately 20 to 25 young men participate, and we've been able to work with them down on the south side of Columbus. So, our goal is to use that as a launchpad to actually then move more into the outcomes we want to achieve for Urban Warriors, which really is around helping them develop into men. So, it's some character building and some leadership development, and helping them become more, more involved with their community, how you give back, how you support, and then tying them through My Brothers Keeper, which has another focus, which is building resiliency and character and job skills and, and all those different types of things. So, we're, we're getting there, we're working on it. I think for this, just for this initiative, we just in the last month, in January, had those two sessions, and we were excited to see that the young men participated in that.
Well, excellent, because if your goal was to have 35 participants, yet between 20 and 25, you're certainly on way to that goal, and just appreciate that. And lastly, can you tell me about the numbers of individuals who've graduated from your program, the Choose to Change?
Yes. So, we're happy to say that the AAMI initiative overall, in December of 2014, celebrated its 1,000th man. So, we have served over 1,000 men from 2007 to 2014. In 2015, we're well on track to exceed our goal. We've already graduated 84 men. We've seen over 100. We have another graduation coming up on March the 24th. Will there be approximately 35? You know, people are still trying to make it to completion, but our goal is to see at least 35 to 36 of the 40 men who are enrolled in the class to graduate on March the 24th.
Those are great numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll move on to the Father to Father program. Father to Father is designed to assist men with becoming the responsible, nurturing, and instinctive fathers they desire to be, while also educating the general public on the essential role that fathers have in the development of their children. The program serves fathers of all ethnic and racial groups, though we recognize that the disproportionate need in urban centers provides, will provide a major constituency for our work. Our new component of our work involves tackling the issue of infant mortality from a fatherhood perspective as well. Through an initiative being piloted with the OSU Moms-to-Be program, the Father to Father program provides mentor dads to expectant dads. With this relationship, new dads learn the nuances of fatherhood, as well as strategies for ensuring that their children make it to their first birthday and beyond. The Father to Father program highlights the nurturing fathers curriculum as an evidence-based curriculum that focuses on father and child relationship. Throughout history, fathers have been considered a valuable and important part of a child and a family's life, and recent research overwhelmingly supports the benefits that accrue to children and families through positive father involvement. This research, research has also strongly points out the unique benefits that men gain through active involvement with their children and their families. Our community partners with Father to Father, including United Way as a supporter, include, again, Columbus State and Franklin County Child Enforcement, Franklin County Children's Services, the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, Ohio Commission on Fatherhood, the OSU Moms-to-Be Program, Central Ohio Minority Business Association, Southeast Mental Health, and COSI. Father to Father is structured as a 10-week program, meets two and a half hours a week, one day a week. We offer classes again on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our next orientation for that one is March the 11th, and the cohort begins April 5th. So, there's availability for people to join the class ongoing. That one has like an orientation every Friday, and they sign up to be available for the next cohort. Again, we go through a curriculum, we have partners come in, we take the men out into the community to learn about other resources and connect them to resources. So, that program has become one of our hallmark initiatives and has a really great brand in the community in terms of developing and nurturing fatherhood.
And you also, with your graduation program, how many individuals have graduated from your program?
So, included in that 2014 1,000th men, that was a combined number, but so far this year, we've graduated, it's a little bit more than Choose to Change, so we've probably graduated about 90 to 92 individuals. We have a graduation coming up on the 24th again, and we are expected to graduate probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 men, an additional 30 men on March the 24th. And they also have a very active alumni group.
Thank you. And if an individual wants to get involved in your programming, how can they do that?
So, we take walk-ins. We're at 788 Mount Vernon Avenue. We're there from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and we take walk-ins. We also have our website, it's www.cul.org, or they can give us a call, 614-257-6300, and they can just mention that, which program they would like to become a part of.
Thank you. And the total funding is $277,522, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for cutting down.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming down. ECDI?
Pro Tem Tyson, thank you so much. Councilmember Stenziano, Councilmember Brown, thank you. I am here on behalf of Ena Kenny today, who is in bed day two of the flu. So, I'm going to start with Individual Development Accounts, our IDA program, then Ellen Harvey, who's with me, Executive Director of the Women's Business Center, is going to talk about the Women's Business Center. Before I get into it, just some brief information about Economic and Community Development Institute. We're the third-largest U.S. SBA intermediary, microlender, and U.S. Treasury-designated Community Developmental, Development Financial Institute, CDFI. Our mission is to invest in people to create measurable and enduring social and economic change. Since our inception in 2004, we have assisted over 6,900 individuals, dispersed over $29 million through 1,400 loans, and created and retained over 5,000 jobs via our suite of services and programs that are in our offices in Cleveland, Columbus, Akron, and in Toledo. Our IDA program, Individual Development Account, benefits the community by teaching residents how to manage their finances and learning to save for assets that will improve their lives. Participants participate in financial literacy classes and receive one-on-one counseling regarding budgeting, avoidance of financial pitfalls, and improving credit scores. Participants then also participate in asset-specific training, such as homebuyer education and business plan training. Participants are required to save for a minimum of six months. When participants meet their savings goals, their money is matched with funds from the city of Columbus and federal government dollars to be used for tuition and school supplies, applicable small business expenses, or down payment on their first home. We are on track to meet our goals for the 2015 grant. 68 individuals will successfully complete financial literacy training, have a score of a minimum of 80% or higher on their post-test, which is, they need 80% or higher to graduate. 55 will have acquired specific knowledge related to business development or purchasing a home, and 50 individuals will have saved and been matched. In 2016, we plan to continue financial literacy and business plan training with a one-on-one follow-up to 76, excuse me, participants. Savings will be matched to individuals. Through financial literacy education, we are helping people manage their money, acquire assets that lead to a better life, and improve the economic impact on the community as a whole. The financial partners for the IDA program include PNC Bank, the O'Neill Foundation, United Way, and the federal government, specifically the Assets for Independence Program, which is AFI. HomePort provides homebuyer education for those purchasing a home, and ECDI's Women's Business Center can help those starting or growing a business. And I want to mention the financial literacy training that we offer at ECDI. It's a course designed to provide clients with the comprehensive view on personal savings, budgeting, the general meets the beaten bones to what it takes to really understand the financials. And we also have staff that can help with language barriers. We have one-on-one language support to meet the needs of our clients, because of course we do deal with refugee and immigrant-based population here in Columbus.
Are there any questions on that particular one?
Hi, good afternoon, and thanks again for having us here today. I am Ellen Harvey, the Director of the Women's Business Center, and we also receiving funny, money from the city as far as the grant goes as well. The majority of our funding comes from the Office of Women's Business Ownership Federal Funding, but it is not without the city money that we would be able to do the things that we do. We provide services to women entrepreneurs who are inspiring entrepreneurs, as well as entrepreneurs who are already been in existence and are looking to expand and grow their business. We do that through a variety of different services, as far as marketing, training, one-on-one counseling. We provide a facility of which they can come and work. There is a computer lab, there's a resource library, there is a library that they're actually able to check out books. They also have access to printing and copying services that is free to them. They have access to these services through a $45 membership fee. In addition to that, they're able to utilize the center five days a week, and also on Saturdays, the first and, and third Saturday of the month. 85% of the individuals that we serve through this program are residents in the Columbus City community. In addition to that, they also fall in the range of, majority of them being also low to moderate income based on federal poverty guidelines, as well as minorities. We have 16 different ways that we track the services that we are provided through the funding given to us from the city of Columbus. And those, through those, those services that are offered, we are able to help expand and grow these businesses for these women. We have some goals, pretty lofty goals, that we had in place for the first year of funding that we received in April of 2015, of where we wanted to create 14 new women-owned businesses, have over 120, 10 different trainings and so forth. And the, the trainings range from anything from general business management to business planning, finances, accounting, marketing, networking, and then also, we have a strong focus on certifications for them to be able to receive contracts with the city of Columbus. We dedicate a whole month to nothing but certifications, be it minority certifications, female-owned certification, women-owned small business certification. We are on track to meet all of our goals that we set in place for our first year of funding, and we are happy to say that we've actually received now a second year of funding to go towards the services that we offer at the Women's Business Center. Also, since the first amount of money that we received back in April, as of January 31st, 2016, we have 551 individual touches, of which we've provided some type of service to the women that we serve. And though we are women-focused and based, we do have, where we provide these services to anyone, and so we do find that a lot of men take advantage of our services as well. Again, still falling within that range of low to moderate income, as well as minorities. Why is the work that we do important is because we are able, we are able, these small businesses to flourish, we are creating an impact that goes beyond just creating a job, just, and creating economic impact in that community, we're creating a ripple effect in that family, creating some sustainability in that home. Our partners, we can't do this alone, and even with the city funding, we still have other financial partners that help get behind what we do. Ohio CDC, several of the other different banks, the Women's Fund, and other businesses donate to the cause that we have. In addition to that, we see because of the income level of the individuals that we serve, there's social services that need to be met, and so we partner with a lot of other agencies to help make sure that we're addressing those needs as well. The Food Bank, the Dress for Success, New Directions Career Institute, E-program with United Way, and of course, our partners in what we do as far as entrepreneurship, Convo, Score, SBDC, Women's Small Business Accelerator, Freedom à la Carte, and other veteran groups as we celebrate them in November. So, you can contact us, find more out, find more about the Women's Business Center at ohio, wbcohio.org, or myself, Ellen Harvey, at 614-625-3649. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Just a couple of quick questions, and you can answer this. So, on your goals, you were going to assist, and this is 14 new, new women-owned businesses, expansion of businesses. Do you guys have those numbers?
We do not have the actual numbers of where we're at right now. What I can tell you is that we are on track to meet or exceed those goals.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Because if we want to make sure that we're meeting our goals. And so, the other question, I'll just, well, first, not question, but one, I am appreciative of your partnering with organizations, and certainly partnering with organizations that are not all, are not our financial, as you just mentioned, that with, whether it be the Food Bank or other needs that individuals may have that within the low to moderate income, that you're reaching out and helping those individuals to be able to get those resources. That's really key. That's something that I really look forward, look to, because I know that when you are working with different individuals, they have various needs before they can move their business forward, and we have lots of resources in this community. Many of them are sitting in this room, others will sit in on the 16th, that we want to make sure that you, and when you see a need, you're linking individuals to that appropriate, to those organizations that can help meet that need. So, I thank you for doing that work, certainly focusing on women and women-owned businesses, to be able to start a, a small business and kind of move that business to the next level. I appreciate that work. And also, I certainly didn't mention previously, the presentation about the, the IDA program. It is important. Financial literacy is key for, for your household, for your business, and so just appreciate the work that you're doing in those areas. Both of your, each of your programs, one of them, I think the economic, the IDA program is $73,759, and the Women's Business Center is $73,760. So, I thank you for that, and any questions? I also want to make it, not for your, I want to make it for the Urban League. I only mentioned their one funding amount, so I don't want them to think that that's, that's the last funding amount. They're also for the, for the Choose to Change program, they're getting $162,272. So, I didn't want to make sure you're only getting the one amount. Thank you. All right. Our next presentate presenter is from Gladden Community House, Marty Sareko.
Sareko.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Councilwoman Tyson and other city council members. Thank you very much for inviting us, Gladden Community House, this afternoon. We wanted to thank you for your ongoing support financially, as well... We wanted to thank you for your ongoing support financially, as well as we do receive support from United Way of Central Ohio and senior options in order to keep our ship afloat, as we say, with our food pantry. We are located in the Franklin County community. We are currently serving around 1,000 households a month. We've actually seen a decrease in the last couple of months. We're not for sure if this is due to the weather. We are hoping it is due to increased employment and stability in our community. We are one of the few pantries that offer home deliveries for handicapped individuals and seniors. We serve probably about 150 deliveries every Friday to those individuals. We also, all of our food comes from Mid-Ohio Food Bank. We could not do this without them. We also receive produce five days a week to increase healthy eating and nutritional information. We have produce markets in the summer. Also, all of the produce comes from Mid-Ohio Food Bank. We also have other resources currently at our pantry. Mid-Ohio also loans out their Ohio Benefit Bank workers to be in the pantry a couple days a week, to link people to SNAP benefits and other resources. It is a great service for our folks. We also have linked with the Columbus Diaper Coalition, and we are having diapers flowing into our pantry, which has been, you know, wonderful. And we also partner with the Columbus Health Department to do health checks, as well as the Ohio Diabetes Association to come in as well. I think a unique factor with the pantry is that it's linked, obviously, to Gladden Community House. So they, everyone that comes to the pantry are able to link to our Community Services Department, where we have had a partnership with the Breathing Association for the last three years. Folks don't need to travel to Henderson or the east side of town in order to have PIP re-verification, winter crisis, summer cooling. We provide that service right at Gladden, which is two blocks away from the pantry. We also have contracts with the Community Shelter Board and Franklin County Children's Services, all providing family support, financial assistance, parenting classes, as well as rental assistance, which all of our folks that are coming to the pantry can access information, as well as enrollment into those programs. We work with Hands on Central Ohio in terms of having a lot of those referrals for our Stable Family Program coming from Hands on. We also have partnered with Mount Carmel Outreach Center. Our pantry folks do cooking classes over there one time a month, and we have also provided monthly taste testings, nutritional classes, and how to make your own kind of household cleaning products within the pantry.
Well, thank you for coming down, and certainly not only providing food to the residents, but you're certainly providing lots of services, which we really appreciate. And I am amazed that you're making deliveries to families that can't get there, and I appreciate that, too. So I appreciate your work. You're on target, I see, to hopefully have 11,000 non-duplicated persons served at your pantry. And certainly for the viewing and listening residents, that the lowest median household income within Franklin County is $23,316, and the highest poverty rate in Franklin County, about 37% of those households are below the poverty level, and 77% of those households below self-sufficiency. So I appreciate this is absolutely needed there. We hopefully, we can, you know, I know with Councilmember Brown certainly wants to look at making sure that individuals certainly can have a living wage in this community, and so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and until we get to that place, appreciate the services that we have to offer our community and the work you're doing in Franklin County. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your continued support.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from the Huckleberry House, Kyra Crockett-Hodge. You guys can start kind of lining up as you like to. You don't have to just wait till the person finishes. You can just get ready to move and possess.
Because I don't think you can see from back there. You only see the person who's up. You can't see the list.
What I'll do then, so I'll just mention, so Huckleberry House, then Life Care Alliance, then Mid-Ohio Food Bank, and then Salvation Army. Will that help? All right, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Kyra Crockett-Hodge, and I'm representing Huckleberry House, actually, two programs. I run the Youth Outreach Program, but I am also here to represent the crisis shelter as well. Huckleberry House's crisis services provide safe emergency shelter, food, and supportive services to area teens and their families. First and foremost, of course, Columbus needs a safe place for young people to stay. And so whether they ran away, or they were put out of their homes, our job is to get them there and to keep them off the streets. And so our crisis shelter program works to strengthen the family relationships and reunite runaway and estranged youth with their families. And by maintaining our dedication to family reunification, excuse me, reunification as an alternative to youth homelessness, we both serve teens and their families. The crisis service program meets the emergency and short-term basic needs of teens and their families, lack of stable housing and/or safe, unsafe home environment. Of course, precludes the good health and interrupts all attempts at obtaining and maintaining employment and attending school. Because any period of time living on the street is extremely dangerous, Huckleberry House also provides in-home services that engage at-risk youth and prevent teens from running away. We guarantee temporary shelter to all youth to ensure that the outdoors is not their only option. And then we work with young people between ages of 12 and 17 that are able to come to our shelter. Some of our crisis program successes, we saw 557 youth in 2015. We served 3,028 nights of emergency shelter. 87% of those teens returned to living with a family, or a relative, or a friend. And then we also have 94 Safe Place Partners, which are the Kroger stores, the fire stations, and White Castles, where young people can go 24 hours a day if they are in crisis in order to get to Huckleberry House. Some of the people that we are also receiving, financial partners, are the Atom H Medicaid, Department of Health and Human Services, United Way, private foundation grants, FCCS, and Ohio Department of Education for the crisis shelter. And then we also have formal agreements with working with OYAP, PFSN, of course, FCCS again, to provide support to young people with multi-system involvement. In addition to formal agreements, the crisis program also collaborates with Nationwide Children's Hospital, Behavioral Health, Directions for Youth, Netcare, Buckeye Ranch, Rosemont, Mary Haven, and many groups assist the crisis program by providing in-kind support. And that's it. We have the 24-hour crisis hotline that people can access 24 hours a day, and that's 294-5553. At any time, young people can call that number.
So you just mentioned that you've served 557 teens in the previous year.
2015, yes.
And you, and the goal was to, and you've unified, is it 80% of them?
Yes, well, that's not actually our goal, but 87% were reunified. So that is a percent that was either to go back home, or to go to another grandma, auntie, somebody else.
And so, and your goal was 60%. So you've exceeded your goal.
Yes.
That's tremendous. And then you also contact those youth within 90 days to see how they're doing?
Yes.
And how's that, tell me about the success of that?
So I didn't participate on the actual follow-ups, but from what I've understand, that they are going pretty well, and a lot of the, making sure that the connections have been made, the linkages and referrals, whether it's to counseling or ongoing services, what we call community support services, where we understand that crisis situations are not going to be solved in three to five days, or however long they're at our shelter, so making sure that they are being linked after they leave, and make sure that those things have been, excuse me, followed through.
Any questions, Councilmember Brown?
And you're finding that you can reach them 90 days later?
Yes, a lot of them we can. Most of the times when they are going back in our crisis shelter, because they're the younger, 12 to 17, is a little bit easier to find, and keeping tracks on them. There are some that, you know, have disconnected numbers, and, you know, things like that have moved, and then sometimes it's harder to keep in contact with them.
That's a good sign in itself, that you can reach them 90 days later, mostly, I think.
Yes.
So that's great.
Most definitely.
Thank you. And Councilmember Brown, there, the goal is, out of 300 youth, 81% will be contacted with, will be contacted and contacted within 90 days of that, of the discharge, and so we appreciate that work. All right, and then your next program. And this program receives $54,277.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the Youth Outreach Program is what we call YAP, and we currently see ourselves as roadside assistance. And so basically, to help teens who are stuck or disconnected, find resources in the community. Aside from our crisis shelter, where kids are coming to us, we're actually going to find kids that are not necessarily saying, hey, I need help. So we are going out and finding young people who are either on the streets or are struggling with different situations, and getting them connected to whatever services they may need. We have learned that making connections to community programs and resources are just not enough sometimes. So being able to build, they're battling with so many numerous and significant social, emotional, mental health issues, it takes a lot longer just to get them connected and leave them alone. This program works from 12 to 24 years of age. A lot of times are that transitional age youth, that 18 to 24, that's where we're getting a lot of our numbers. So they need, so what we have said, that there's many programs that are not designed to provide, is what we do is we basically are walking them through, instead of saying, okay, you're 18, oh yeah, go on over to the Urban League, they have a housing program. We're actually, we understand that they don't function that way. Their brain doesn't function that way, so in order to walk them through the process and help them navigate, empower them, and then enable them to make those decisions to be able to become self-sufficient. So we go the extra mile to ensure that community resources support our community's youth. So homeless youth worry about aging into the adult shelter system, becoming lifers, and losing sight of their goals and dreams. So we assume that individuals and families possess strengths and values at their best asset for positive change. Our services are predicated on the understanding that youth need support, guidance, and opportunities during adolescence. 2015, we made 2,932 youth contacts. We conducted 746 hours of youth outreach. We opened 56 new individual cases. We linked 88% of those individual cases to support services, and we logged 404 hours of street-based individual case management. And one thing that has shifted in the past, for at least last year, it was, we were only down to two workers, and where we were doing lots of outreach before from the years, then we got so bogged down by the need for case management. These kids were not just needing, you know, just certain things, giving hygiene packs and giving them something, some food. It was more so they needed case management, intense case management, getting linked to counseling, getting, helping with jobs. We say the big three, housing, employment, education are our number three, but we also are helping kids getting linked with healthcare, and Title 20, and helping them get with benefits. So the needs are so much greater that we were doing a lot more case management than rather just general outreach. We get pretty much all of our funding from you guys. Hinkels and McCoy, we just got a contract with them that we are helping provide services to the people in their employment program, so to basically remove the barriers that they are having in order to become successful in their program. So if a young person is struggling in their employment program because they're homeless, or that they don't have any food, then we work with that young person on a case, individual case management, and then. So that is one of our new program, or one of our other funding sources. And then, and I'll, because I only have a few seconds, we are just, what we're hoping for, this year, we have just opened up a, what we're calling the YAP shop. And it is be on, it will be on 893 East 11th Avenue, at the corner of 11th and Cleveland, right by the Lending Cafe. And it's basically a place, it's the same thing that YAP is known to do, but now we have a stationary building. So we are able to increase the number of young people that we can see and help, where young people can come and get services right there on the site, no matter if we've done outreach, and they have met us before at all, they can still come to a place where there will be consistent hours, and be seen, and get connected to whatever resources they may have, or they may need.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. So a couple of questions. One, how many people are doing this work?
Now we have four. So there's, there's four of us right now, and so we always need more.
Oh, and you said that you had 56 new cases this year, 2,000?
15. Oh, two, oh, hours?
No, 746 hours, I think you said.
Yes.
I think you said 2,000?
746 hours, and we had 2,932 youth contacts. So that's it. When we're just out, wherever young people are hanging out, rec centers, malls, wherever young people are, we're going to find out where they're at and what they need.
So certainly, and you're right, when you're talking about case management, it's just different just going and just giving a packet, but with the needs that are there, and to help them get to the place they need to go, it's individual case management, and it does take a, takes a significant amount of time to do that work.
Yes.
The question I'll ask, is so you, in your initial application, you were saying that 275 youth will be linked to shelter. Is that included in these numbers?
That 275 that will be linked to shelter?
Mm-hmm.
I believe so, because what, even if the kids that are homeless, we're linking them with the YMCA, the family shelters, and also our own shelter. So what that is, one of our number one is housing. Once you're 18, and housing is a big, big issue.
It remains an issue for these young people.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And so this grant is for $122,689.
Okay.
Any questions for my councilmembers?
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to welcome Councilmember Shannon Harden to the hearing. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hodge, for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Gearing.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, and you?
Fine. As President and CEO of Life Care Alliance, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember and President Pro Tem Tyson, and Councilmembers Brown and Harden. We have two programs funded at Life Care Alliance by the city. I'm going to start with the one that's been funded for the longest period of time, Meals on Wheels for those under age 60. While we provide Meals on Wheels here in Central Ohio, the federal age for people to receive benefits and actually qualify for Meals on Wheels is 60. The problem is that the fastest-growing group of clients that we have in need for this service are those under age 60. These are people with chronic illnesses and other debilitating issues that keep them at home, unable to work, and in need of services. We provide over 100,000 meals each year to these individuals, keeping them happy, healthy, and living in their own homes where they all want to be. Now, for the citizens who take advantage of this program, they get the opportunity for independence, and the opportunity to remain oftentimes out of hospitals because of the nourishment that we provide them. And we provide them with an Ohio and federally approved Department of Agriculture meal. And I would tell you, recently, the head of the Department of Family Living on the, at the federal level, which is the Assistant Secretary for the Department of Health and Human Services, noted that the premier program in the country to provide this service for Meals on Wheels was us here in Columbus, Ohio. So that's pretty cool. Another aspect of this, which we provide, that we feel is extremely important, is the ROI that it provides to the citizens of Columbus who are watching this telecast right now. Because these people are allowed, our clients are allowed to remain independent and in their own home with our help through this program, they do not have to have premature institutionalization. Independent studies calculate that average right now at over $74,000 per year to institutionalize somebody in Central Ohio. And I can tell you, these folks, they would have to go there, or they would end up in a homeless shelter, which could not service them because of their disabilities and their chronic illness. The citizens of Central Ohio here in Columbus, Ohio are saving over $70,000 a year in tax dollars, which I guarantee you, they would be spending if this program did not exist. So this program, I believe, has one of the greatest ROIs you can ever achieve for, to deliver a very simple meal. And I also want to tell you, we're the last provider in the state of Ohio, still serving this program, or any kind of meal delivery program, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Many have dropped that and gone to a five-day-a-week or less program because of the fact that they do not have the appropriate funding. We have listed a number of partners in our work, including Franklin County Veteran Servants Commission, Ingram White Castle Foundation, Harry Seymour's Foundation, Reinberger Foundation, and then, of course, community support. And I want to tell you, we actually have hundreds and thousands of other supporters of ours, because these meals are often delivered by a volunteer, such as all of you who have delivered meals for us, or helped us in our kitchen. Remember, Harden did that last year. He scooped some food for us last year. And of course, the hospital system. And there was recently a big national story on this, on the CBS Evening News, if I may just take a second, that in Arkansas, a person was sent home at age 81 after just take a second, that in Arkansas, a person was sent home at age 81 after two months in a hospital, they had fixed him up, but sent him home with no service, and there was no service in his area. He had nothing that he could do for himself. He ended up calling the sheriff that evening, begging for help, because he says, I can't hardly get out of my chair, let alone get to the store or buy food for myself. And I should tell you that most of our clients, about 70% of these clients, live on under $1,000 a month of income, is, which is a social security check or some kind of government assistance check. That does not happen in central Ohio. People are discharged from hospitals and they call us, and they know if they call us by 2 o'clock on a Saturday, we'll actually show up on Sunday with food. So that's that first program.
First of all, thank you, Chuck. I'm so glad, Charles. I'm sorry that, so excited that we have this program, because as you said, most people who are under 60 don't have the ability to get these programs. And there are so many individuals that have disabilities that need to be, need to eat each and every day. And even if you were able to have food stamps, if you can't cook and you can't, you're disabled, you can't do that, it's, the food stamps don't really help the situation if no one's preparing the food for you.
Not if you can't get to the store.
That's right, to buy the food. So it's a unique program, and this particular program, as you said, it served, provided 40,722 home-delivered meals. And I just appreciate this work. The funding for this program is $285,055 for this program.
Yes. And I might add, real quickly, this is the only program of its kind in the country that I am aware of right now, that qualifier that does not have a waiting list for these services. And that's because of your funding and the funding of all the donors in central Ohio who assist with this work.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second program is, this is new funding with the new cycle, and that's our Columbus Cancer Clinic Home Care Support Program. Life Care Alliance is proud to house the oldest free cancer clinic in the United States of America, the Columbus Cancer Clinic. It has been around since 1921. And you fund us with $46,100 to allow people to, again, remain safe and independent in their own home when they live with cancer. This program also does a number of other things if you really drill down. It also keeps people out of premature institutionalization and also out of homelessness, which many of these folks would be in one of our homeless shelters if not for this program. And while we have wonderful homeless shelter system here in central Ohio, it's better not to be part of it. The Columbus Cancer Clinic is not there to cure cancer, it's to assist low-income individuals through their journey with cancer. We provide medications, nutritional supplements such as Ensure, transportation, which is critical, because oftentimes, these folks with cancer cannot drive while they're going through their treatments, but they have to get to daily radiation or chemotherapy treatments, emergency financial assistance. And I can tell you, I haven't been to my office yet today, I've been in meetings, but in the first three days this week, we paid five people's eviction rentals to keep them from being evicted. In three days, we paid for five people. And we also paid this week so far, six people to have utilities turned back on, including gas for a furnace in early March, and it's snowing outside. Again, we also do other things with this program. We also provide food from our pantry that is specific for people with cancer and AIDS, and many other services that are needed to assist people getting back to their lives. We even provide wigs and prostheses for ladies to be able to go out and interview appropriately to get them back to the workforce, which they all want to do desperately. Again, we save the taxpayers that $70,000 number that I quoted earlier, so that these folks don't have to go into institutionalization. And many of the cancer folks, frankly, have families. So we're not only servicing and taking care of the cancer victim, but we're also taking care of their families, their children, and whoever else are in their units to ensure that they are taken care of and appropriately watched over. One quick story, we recently had a gentleman who, this is just one example, we had a gentleman who was in his late 50s, but he was taking care of a son who was developmentally disabled in about, who was about 30 years of age. The father contracted cancer, and he was very concerned that if he had to go into the hospital or into institutionalized settings, the son, who was developmentally disabled fairly severely, would have to go for sure into an institutionalized setting. We kept this gentleman at home, getting him through his treatments, and he's good now and back to work. And the bottom line is, he had a 30-year-old son who would have had to go into an institutionalized setting, how much would that have cost in not only that son's freedom and self-esteem, but to the taxpayers of central Ohio had he had to go into a facility?
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Mr. Gehrig, thank you for all the work you do. Thank you for your service on the Human Service Chamber, where a lot of the organizations that are funded through the city are part of. But several times you've come to my office, not just advocating for your awesome programs, but for the services that our combined service providers in our community provide. How do folks find out about that particular, the cancer program? Are they referred to the program through service providers, or?
Oftentimes, they come from the three major hospital systems here in town. To give you an example, the Columbus Cancer Clinic accepted 471 clients in 2015 alone from the Ohio State University's James Cancer Clinic. And we take them and do the backup work for them. We actually do screenings and mammograms, believe it or not, to assist them for those who are generally underinsured or uninsured. So many come from that. But you can always just go to our website or call our main number, which is 614-278-3130. And the person who answers is actually a service person who will assist them in their need and can get them hooked up very rapidly. But the vast majority of the Columbus Cancer Clinic programs, folks are coming from the three major hospital systems.
Thank you, Ms. Gehring, for coming down and certainly sharing the great work on two programs that are pretty unique to the city of Columbus. Certainly, the work that you do on an ongoing basis for individuals over 60 and the meals that they're receiving. But certainly, just glad that we saw a need in this community a long time ago, and that Life Care Alliance stepped up and is doing tremendous work for individuals under 60 years old. And again, individuals that certainly are either low-income, under, uninsured individuals who have cancer, or as you mentioned, and AIDS, that you have provided these services for. Just appreciate that. And hopefully, if a viewing or listening audience, if they know of someone, if they, or themselves, that certainly can get in contact with you for these services.
Absolutely. And thank you for this opportunity to share it with the citizens, and thanks to all the people watching this who are our volunteers and help get these services done every day.
That's right. Thank you so much. Our next presenter is from the Mid-Ohio Food Bank, it's Greg Winslow.
Hi, President Protem Tyson, members of council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and thank you sincerely for not only the funding and the opportunity to be here, but also for the, you know, somewhat revamped program of the granting process. It's been really great, it's been well-done. We wanted to recognize Kim Stans and his work and his collaboration and cooperation and communication has been really fantastic. We've been thrilled to be a part of it. The program that was funded for Mid-Ohio Food Bank is our produce markets, which we are tremendously proud of. You know, what they do in the community is provide fresh fruits and vegetables right in neighborhoods where people can access them. It's been a big shift for food banking to go to fresh fruits and vegetables. We will provide into the community this year 9.1 million pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables in Columbus. That will be done through 900 produce markets with 95 partners in neighborhoods, so we're very proud of that. I did want to share, this is Rihanna, and Rihanna is at one of our produce markets on the neighborhood health center on West Broad Street. And she came and was able to get these raspberries that day, and I think her face, you know, shows it clearly, you know, what it means to be able to have fresh foods. And as you can see, you know, kind of the corner of the package there is a little bit eaten that day, she was so excited about getting them that she got started. You know, we think about Rihanna and the other people that are accessing fresh fruits and vegetables that they otherwise simply wouldn't be able to afford. We are becoming a health organization, really to think about the opportunities that people have to improve their health by accessing fresh fruits and vegetables and replacing calories of foods that they may have otherwise purchased themselves or had is a big health benefit. So we're actually working with some federally qualified health centers, we're exchanging data, and we're actually seeing improvements on things like diabetes, hemoglobin, A1C scores based on people's access to fresh foods. So we're really excited about that. I did want to share with our partners, it's only through our partners, the 95 produce market partners, that we're able to provide assistance. Part of the funding also goes towards a resource card that we make available to our partners. And in that, it indicates to people the financial levels that qualify them for various levels of assistance. It has referral numbers for the Ohio Benefit Bank, the 2-on-1 system, WIC, our pantries, and then on the back, it has a list of walk-in pantries where people can access emergency assistance whenever they need it. Funding partners, it is a $2.2 million project for Mid-Ohio Food Bank, and we have a number of partners, like Franklin County, corporate partners, the Community Health Funders Collaborative, which is United Way, Osteopathic Heritage Foundation, and the Columbus Foundation is a supporter of it, and then many people in the community as well. And to access our services, we have outreach counselors who work with families, and they can be reached at 614-325-6443. And so folks can not only learn about produce markets, but all the services of Mid-Ohio Food Bank and the resources of the Ohio Benefit Bank that are offered by our staff as well. So again, thank you very much for the ongoing support, we greatly appreciate it. And as always, invite yourself and other members of council to come out to one of the produce markets and meet folks like Rihanna and see that in action.
First of all, thank you so much for coming down, and a couple of things, I know you're, the funding that you receive is $184,400. And I know your goal was to have 90 locations, and now you're saying you have 95 locations, so you're certainly have exceeded your goal. Also, these produce markets are going to start in April, will they start in April this year?
That's the renewal of the grant period, but from the initial year of funding, they started last year in April.
And so if, how can we get a listing of these, the different locations?
Yes. So on the Mid-Ohio Food Bank website, midohiofoodbank.org, anyone can go in and find an actual listing of the produce markets, and it's by zip code, and it also indicates that the Columbus Market or a different city or suburb. So that's all at midohiofoodbank.org.
All right. Thank you. Again, like I said, to the other organization that was here, it's so important that the Ohio Benefits Bank is associated with you, and that you, so individuals who are coming in for food, their other services are going to need, and you can go ahead and link them to those services. And so, appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for coming down and sharing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The Salvation Army is next. Ms. Edwards?
Good evening. I guess it's evening still. Hello.
How are you doing? Good. I am here, my name is Krista Edwards. I am here with the Salvation Army to represent our Material Assistance Services Program, which is our program that is funded by the city of Columbus. So the Material Assistance Services Program helps meet the basic needs of the members of the Columbus community. We provide several different services. We have five choice food pantries throughout the city of Columbus. Choice Food Pantry is one of our, it's a best practices model in which the pantry is designed to look like a grocery store where the families are able to go around and shop instead of us just assuming what types of food that they will eat. And so we link our families up with a volunteer to walk around the pantry so they can pick their items. We also provide clothing and furniture. Our assistance through, for furniture is through the Furniture Bank of Central Ohio, which we have a partnership with them. And it's critical to note that without this funding, we were going to have to end that program. So we're able to provide furniture solely because of the funding we receive from the city. We also help with rent and utility assistance. Rent is through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, and utility assistance is through the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program. And then Salvation Army has a partnership with Columbia Gas for the Citizens Energy Heat Share Program. We work with the Mid-Ohio Food Bank to provide a monthly commodity food box to senior citizens throughout, it's really throughout Franklin County. Most of them live within our areas, which in the city of Columbus, we provide that box once a month to over 1,400 senior citizens. We have our Christmas Cheer Program, which is our annual holiday food and toy distribution program, which serves about over 6,000 families out at the fairgrounds every year. The work we do is important because we help provide that food, financial assistance, and community linkage to our low-income families in Franklin County who experience that short-term crisis that threaten their basic survival, which we're firm believers in the Maslow hierarchy of needs, in which we need to be able to meet their basic needs so they can continue to build further up and get jobs and be able to be successful. Our financial partners are United Way of Central Ohio, Nationwide Dollar Energy, Primary Care Physicians, and a lot of general funds that come into the Salvation Army. Our key partners are Mid-Ohio Food Bank, the Furniture Bank of Central Ohio, Dollar Energy, and Columbia Gas. And to learn about our services or to access our services, like I said, we have five locations throughout Columbus. So the easiest way is to go through our general line, which is 614-221-6561, and then we can direct you to the closest center within your area.
Thank you. Just one question. On your application, you're saying you're going to reach 10,000 households, receive referrals for basic emergency needs. And tell me where you are in reaching that goal.
We are 51 shy, so we are just at 9,949 households.
51 shy? Well, it's, well, first of all, thank you for making those referrals, and I'm sure that, I mean, I don't know if it's good or bad, 51 shy means, you're still doing amazing work, and just appreciate your work. I had the opportunity to come in with a family, to come to one of the choice pantries and kind of watch how that worked. And I tell you, the family that was there when I was there was just pretty elated that it was like going right to a grocery store and makes people feel really good about themselves. And they were very happy to get the fresh produce that was there, just like the picture from Chuck, not Chuck, but from the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. So I appreciate that you're out in the community and that in those five different communities and people have the opportunity to receive those services. And the city of Columbus provides $115,250 for you to be able to link households with services, and appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to visit. Just one little note, as you were speaking, it reminded me, is it's very important for us to provide dignity to the families as they come to the pantry. And so we find it important that we provide them with just regular grocery store bags. So when they carry their items home or they're getting on the bus, it looks like they've been to Kroger or Giant Eagle, and said they've been to the pantry, but nobody else knows that. And that's just something that's really important to us.
I would agree, it absolutely is, and those bags, as well as you have individuals there who, again, are there to refer them to other services, and so you're doing great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from St. Stevens Community House. Hello, Rebecca.
Good afternoon, President Protem Tyson. My name is Rebecca Peacock-Craig, and I proudly represent and work with the brightest and the best at St. Stevens Community House, where I'm the coordinator of St. Stevens Ohio Health Food and Nutrition Center, often referred to as the Food Pantry. Today, I thank you and the city of Columbus for your continued support that has allowed us to serve over 4,000 hungry households in six zip codes in the last quarter of 2015. Support from the United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Program, private donors and fundraisers, as well as in-kind donations from local entities have also supported us in this effort. St. Stevens Ohio Health Food and Nutrition Center is a walk-in choice pantry that's open five days a week. Other services that we offer to help provide and meet basic needs are, but are not limited to, advocacy with utility companies, linkages to community resources, Ohio Benefit Bank services, and other crisis intervention services that enable families to remain intact and stable. Next, I'd like to share with you what hunger looks like through my eyes as I register. Next, I'd like to share with you what hunger looks like through my eyes as I register people on a daily basis. I see students who work two jobs, and they can't afford their books. It's books or it's food. I see seniors who have worked all their lives, who can't afford medicine and food, and the shame that they have with coming into a food pantry. The face I see is people that we all work with. It's people we worship with. It's people that are employed. It's people that are working part-time jobs and full-time jobs on top of one another, making minimum wages. It's disabled people who had raises in their checks of 14, 18, and $20, and then also had their food stamps cut in the same amount. It's teenage girls who have their education interrupted because their mother cannot afford feminine hygiene products, so they're afraid to go to school. These are the things that you've helped us with. And I thank you. If you have any questions, sorry.
Well, first of all, thank you for being so passionate and compassionate for the individuals that you are serving. And we know that the zip code, one of the zip codes is 43211, probably 4, I don't know of the, your zip code's 43209 is close by, 19 is close by, I'm sorry, 43219. So, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that you are meeting your outcomes. You're saying over 4,100 households are coming there for assistance for food. You also are linking individuals to other services that are needed. And I know you also have providing for holiday food and assistance of that nature, but you just mentioned just some of the basic needs people have, you know, a young girl may need for feminine products, that you're there to be able to do that. You're working, I mean, the working poor. Certainly, we know that we're seeing people who are working, everyone who comes into the shelter, they're not people that are just sitting at home doing nothing. Many of them are working, you know, two jobs, and still there's working poor. So, I appreciate the work that you're doing within your community and continue to do with the compassion that you have. And from the city, the St. Stevens Community House for Community and Emergency Services are receiving $154,645. Thank you so much for coming down on behalf of the people that you serve.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Stonewall Columbus, hello.
Hello.
Lori Gump.
President Pro Tem Tyson, thank you so much for letting us speak today and especially for your continued support. We have two programs at Stonewall. One is intake and referral and our LGBT Veteran Support Program, so I'll address intake and referral first. For 35 years, Stonewall Columbus has served as the only LGBT community center in Central Ohio. One of the most important programs offered at Stonewall is information and referral services. Stonewall receives hundreds of calls a week, 30,000 inquiries for information a year from individuals needing coming-out support, veteran support, transgender community support, legal and immigration assistance, and senior services, just to name a few. Many of our callers are in crisis. Stonewall finds a place for them through our two full-time onsite counselors, mental health organization partners, collaborating LGBT community organizations, and city agencies. Our goal over the last three years has not only been to provide robust referrals and information, but to provide much of that assistance internally through critical professional services, support in social groups, the Stonewall itself develops and implements. So, in addition, I would like to tell you some of the new things we've added this year as we're heading into our second year of funding. We have a new transgender health initiative in which we offer cultural competency training for healthcare providers. We developed a transgender insurance resource sheet this year that helped our trans community navigate through the health insurance marketplace. We have a new full-time transgender outreach coordinator to head up our community engagement to our trans community. And this year, we're very excited in collaboration with the James. Next week, we are making free mammograms at Stonewall available for our lesbians, transgender men, and gender non-conforming community members, again, in a safe space with technicians who are trained in transgender cultural competency. And the other new exciting thing we're doing, we have just started a collaboration last November with Community Refugee and Immigrant Services, Chris. We love them. We will provide resources and services to LGBT refugees who have literally fled from homelands whose laws literally endanger their lives. We're providing community and platforms for them to engage in the larger LGBT community. And we have a new Speakers Bureau presentation to be launched in May, which will give LGBT refugees a chance to tell their own stories and educate and advocate for fellow refugees here and back in their countries of origin. And we think this is important to create further diversity in our city, to encourage tolerance and social inclusion. And again, for the third year, we were and still are a Certified Application Counselor for Healthcare.gov and Ohio Medicaid, ensuring that our LGBT community has access to quality, affordable healthcare. Our many community partners, just a few of them, Adam H., North Central Mental Health, Columbus Health Department, ARC, the Columbus VA, OSU, James, Bravo, Kaleidoscope, COA, COAA, and more. Our financial partners include City of Columbus, OutToEnroll, Walgreens, UPS, COAA, Adam H., and many members and donors of Stonewall.
Thank you. Well, first of all, just, well, you're getting 30,000 calls for services. That's pretty significant and shows that there's a great need for Stonewall and the services that you provide. And the focus of 2015 into 16 is certainly focused on the transgender
Correct.
individuals in our community. And I appreciate that you're doing that work because I think, again, we want to make sure that everyone in this community has the services that they need to be able to live out their full potential.
Correct.
And so, I appreciate the focus that you're doing in that regard and working with the James too on just the mammograms.
It's just, this is our third year, and you know, it's really developed into a great relationship. And again, working with them two years, but this year, doing cultural competency with their intake, with their staff, to available to let our transgender men who have not had top surgery to come to a safe space. The odds of them actually going to sort of brick-and-mortar facility, again, being able to offer this and feeling 100% comfortable with the James, that our community is in good hands and is culturally competent, it's been very exciting that that's developed this year into that service for our community.
Absolutely right. And again, having that, you know, that same partner, so if there were ever any issues with the individuals, that you have a partner that you can go back and look at the films and do all those kinds of things
Yeah.
to see if there's any issues.
And that's what we found, again, you know, really instituting services within Stonewall and then being able to, any needs outside of that, for example, we're ACA-certified applications. So, this year, focusing on our transgender community, so we got them, everyone insured or on Medicaid, well, now we've got to help them find culturally competent healthcare. So, it's really, it really is intake, and it really is referral, and how important both of those elements are to this program.
I know that your goal certainly was to do eight educational presentations regarding LGBT issues, I think, that you have.
Right.
Even sharing today, you've exceeded your goal
Yes, quite.
in doing that.
Yes.
And 9,500 people out of your 20,000, 9,500 people out of 20,000 in contact with the organization will receive your services.
Correct, yes.
And so, you're doing that.
Yes.
All right. So, you're, for this particular grant opportunity, it's for $73,576.
Yes, and thank you.
You're welcome. Let's go to the next one. Thank you.
Okay. This is our LGBT Veteran Support Program. Since the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell in 2011, lesbian, gay, and bisexual military service members have finally been allowed to serve openly without the fear of dishonorable discharge. Yet, many of our LGBT veterans still live with the emotional, social, and psychological scars of having served the military previous to this repeal. This legacy and memory of intolerance, shame, and humiliation still remains. Many of them have not engaged in the LGBT community at large, having already once experienced great personal loss from their identification as being gay. Also, they often find themselves unwelcome or uncomfortable in the larger veterans community. As a result, many veterans, LGBT veterans, find themselves isolated without the support of either community. This often results in self-segregation from vital emotional connections to their peers. So, our remedy to that is in 2013, we started our LGBTQ Veteran Support Program. With this program, firstly, we offer a regularly scheduled veteran support group, and we've added now this year a social group where our veterans can gather to exchange shared experience and create community. And now, we're just beginning to offer, along with the Columbus VA, benefits and resource information nights at Stonewall to actually let veterans know what benefits are available to them and how to apply. The second part of our program is our LGBT Veterans Discharge Review Program. We work with veterans who have been previously discharged because, dishonorably because of being gay. Stonewall provides qualified caseworkers who help veterans maneuver through the often very difficult and tedious Army Review Board administrative process to overturn less-than-honorable discharges. Senator Sherrod Brown's office and staff are also providing robust collaboration with us. This process most often takes over a year to a year and a half to complete. I will say, we started this, it was a lot to start in the beginning. We are very proud to say that in January, we helped 82-year-old veteran Donald Holman finally receive his honorable discharge after, 60 years after he was dishonorably discharged from the Army. We are currently working with nine other veterans in different stages of this process. Again, process of getting records and then making the actual application and making the case takes hours to work with them. We've actually served 21 veterans over the last two years. But again, sometimes we lose veterans. Sometimes they decide to not go through this once we're looking at actually creating the narrative for the application process. But even then, in the meantime, they've gotten to tell their story somewhere where that story is appreciated and honored. In addition to the support group since 2014, I mean, a support group and Veterans Discharge Review Program, in addition, we, since 2014, our program annually designates November as our LGBT Veterans Awareness Month. This entails a full program of community outreach
[bell]
to recognize our veterans' service to country and community. This past November, we were proud to honor four more of our distinguished LGBT veterans with appreciation ceremony and reception attended by nearly 100 people. Our veterans received congratulations from Columbus City Council. Thank you. Representative Joyce Beatty and Senator Sherrod Brown. Our collaborating partner is primarily the Columbus VA. Now, and I must give them some props here because they've been outstanding in not only their support of our program, but they've really stood behind all the LGBTQ veterans in Central Ohio. The addition of their LGBTQ liaison at Columbus VA has done enormous good and has created an environment of inclusion and acceptance for our veterans. Honestly, we have no financial partner but you. This is really what your support is doing, especially something with like the discharge review. It takes hours and hours of staff to be able to do this. And I mean it sincerely when I said if this was not funded by you, even if it could still happen, it would not be happening as earnestly and robustly as it is. So, we thank you very much. To find out about any of these programs, you can go to stonewallcolumbus.org, to our website. We're also at 1160 North High Street. You can drop in anytime. We're at Fourth Avenue and High Street. And our phone is 614, that 614 is important now, 614-299-7764, again, for those at home, So, thank you.
And thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing. I know the grant isn't for a tremendous amount of money, but certainly with this amount of money, you've been able to do some incredible work.
Yeah.
And the grant is for $8,730. However, just the story of the individual who, well, who's been able to receive, turn a dishonorable discharge into an honorable discharge, it makes a tremendous difference. And so, I thank you for the work that you're doing to continue to support our LGBTQ veteran support.
You got it. And thank you. It's made all the difference. It really has.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your energy and passion.
Oh, thank you.
It's there. Thank you. Our Boys and Girls Club of Columbus, Hillary Blakemore, Blakemore, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman and President Pro Tem Tyson. My name's Hillary Blakemore, and I am part of the executive leadership team at the Boys and Girls Clubs of Columbus. And I'm here speaking on behalf of our CEO, Rebecca Asmo, today, as well as the 5,800 young people we served in the community last year. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Columbus is focused on providing enrichment opportunities to school-based youth and teens during out-of-school time. The time after school in the evenings and in the summer are when our young students need us the most. The funding was for our Growth for Great Futures Initiative to expand our services in Columbus to impact more youth each year. Every day until 8:00 PM and during the summer, our clubs are open to serve youth on the west side, south side, near north, Wyland Park, east side, far east side, and campus areas of Columbus. Our programs are directed by youth development professionals and are built upon Boys and Girls Clubs of America nationally-recognized, evidence-based program format, focusing on academic success, healthy lifestyles, and good character and citizenship. When you walk into a Boys and Girls Club, you'll see anything from tutoring, career development, arts programming, STEM, education, sports teams, and generally, a lot of fun. Out-of-school time is a critical piece of the success equation for youth in Columbus, one that is often overlooked. We appreciate council's understanding of this importance of the time and thank them for their targeted investment in the young people in Columbus through the Boys and Girls Club. Summer learning loss and our lack of access to out-of-school time enrichment is the number one contributor to the academic achievement gap that persists in too many of our communities. Support from council has helped the Boys and Girls Club to expand its teen programming and summer offerings and contributed directly to our ability to serve over 1,100 additional youth in 2015. We expect to see this growth continue at a similar rate, and thanks in large part to the investment of city council and many other private investors, including government, local businesses, and many individuals as well. This strong support from both public and private sector allows us, our programs, to keep our costs low, just charging $5 per youth per year to join the program. And that will be critical to keeping that cost low to sustain the growth over the future years in the coming decade. So, every day in Columbus, over 58,000 young people leave school with no place to go, and this number drastically increases in the summer. So, thank you for your continued support of the Boys and Girls Club as we work to close this gap and ensure that every young person in our community has opportunity for a great future. To join the club, you can go to our website at www.bgcolumbus.org, or they can call our main line at 614-221-8830, and we can direct them to a club that's closest to their neighborhood.
Can you share with the listening and viewing audience how you have the work that you do to ensure that these individuals are not having the learning loss in the summer?
Absolutely. So, during the summertime, when they're not in school, we are running a summer brain gain program in which, it's about four hours during our summer day, in which the kids are doing fun educational activities. And then, we're connected to see their pre- and post-test through the Columbus City Schools to see if they are having a learning loss, a learning gain, or they're staying on their correct level, so, which is really great. So, we're not having to do additional academic testing, per se. We're able to access the Columbus City Schools grades to do that.
And can you talk about the success?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, over the past years, we have added more kids to each program. The first year was around 96% of our kids had no academic learning loss or an academic gain. Last year, that number went down slightly due to the fact we added more kids into the program, but it was around the 89% level, and we continue to see that and expect to see the same thing in the coming year.
Thank you. So, you certainly have achieved your goal. You said 80% of participating youth would not experiencing learning loss during that period.
Correct.
And certainly, you have, you've achieved the goal. And thank you for the work that you do, working with our young people in our communities.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
And they receive $69,150. The Columbus Speech and Hearing Center, Ms. Jamie Noon. Good afternoon. The Columbus Speech and Hearing Center, Ms. Jamie Noon, good afternoon.
Thank you for having us. The mission of Columbus Speech and Hearing Center is to help all people improve communication and vocational independence for life. For more than 90 years, Columbus Speech and Hearing Center has served tens of thousands of individuals in and around Columbus, Ohio. The comprehensive program for the deaf, or CPD, has served more than 3,500 individuals since its inception in 1971. Last year, CPD served a total of 266 individuals from a total of eight Central Ohio counties, the majority of which were from the Columbus metropolitan area. CPD serves eligible individuals ages 18 and older with significant disabilities and other barriers to employment, including limited work histories, legal challenges, and/or lack of access to or knowledge about other resources. We provide a wide range of vocational services, including job development, career exploration, community-based assessment, and job retention. Of the almost 12,000 hours authorized to CPD by Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities, in 2015, only 217 hours, or less than 1%, were for personal development or soft skills training. Many of the individuals we serve have not worked for many years, or possibly have not worked at all, and would greatly benefit from additional training in this area. These soft skills may mean the difference between simply getting a job and having a career, truly creating vocational independence for life. Through funding from the City of Columbus, our 10-week soft skills courses include but are not limited to modules on interest and skills identification, work values and self-esteem, goal-setting and budgeting, decision-making, communication skills and interpersonal awareness, avoiding stereotyping, appreciating uniqueness, and needs, barriers, and strategies for success. Courses are open to individuals with any disability with an interest in learning and practicing these skills. Offering these classes has allowed CPD to expand its existing service offerings and thus far have included populations traditionally underrepresented in CPD employment services, including younger adults with autism spectrum disorders and older adults with developmental disabilities. We offered a total of four sessions in 2015 and had a completion rate of 74%. We were committed to eight 10-week sessions and will actually hold a total of nine sessions by the end of this fiscal year. Some classes were smaller to accommodate deaf and hard-of-hearing students as it relates to their communication challenges. Moving forward, we are increasing targeted marketing to specific disability groups, beginning with ADAMH network providers, homeless populations, and autism groups, and also in considering barriers to attendance such as transportation, have approached several community partners about presenting courses on-site. While the majority of CPD referrals come from OOD, we also receive referrals from local boards of DD, as well as some private pay sources. We also receive additional funding from the United Way of Central Ohio. Our employment specialists have more than 100 years of combined experience in vocational rehabilitation and are truly experts in the field. They're extremely knowledgeable about local resources and frequently make referrals to other agency partners when needed, including Dress for Success, Coda, Job and Family Services, mental health providers, local food pantries, et cetera. A list of community resources is provided to all new CPD participants. For more information, please contact myself, Jamie Noon, Director of CPD, at area code And you can also visit our website, www.cpdworks.org.
Jamie, thank you for coming down, and certainly hope our viewing and listening audience will see that, just the variety of programs that we're offering to the residents of our community. And certainly, this particular program is a comprehensive program for the deaf and providing the type of soft skills that are necessary for individuals to continue to move forward in their lives. So I do appreciate the work that you're doing and the uniqueness of this program, and just appreciate what you're, the success of it for individuals to continue to move forward in their lives. This year funded at $30,149.
Great. Thank you so much.
United Way of Central Ohio, Mr. Ryan Edwards.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Tyson. I want to thank city council and yourself for your gracious support of United Way as a whole, and also for the two programs that we'll be presenting tonight, which will be the Neighborhood Partnership Grants Program and our Tax Time Program. I'm Ryan Edwards. I'm the Senior Impact Director of our Home Impact Area, and I lead our Neighborhood Partnership Center at United Way of Central Ohio. As mentioned, I'll be presenting on behalf of the Neighborhood Partnership Grants Program that falls under our Neighborhood Partnership Center. The Neighborhood Partnership Grants Program provides resources to support neighborhood organizations making improvements in low and moderate income areas in Columbus. Projects support capacity building at the neighborhood level, engage numerous stakeholder groups, and showcase local talent. The MPG program works to enhance neighborhood stabilization efforts by empowering residents and organizations to implement projects that will improve neighborhood conditions. Many of the projects supported by MPG's are performed by grassroots resident organizations who are typically not eligible for funding under traditional grant programs because of their size, legal structure, or the nature of their projects. As a result, the MPG program offers a highly desirable and unique resource for civic associations, area commissions, and grassroots groups. Organizations and their projects are not required to be large or sophisticated to participate in the program, giving many neighborhoods the opportunity to receive funds to provide improvements such as beautification, community engagement, safety festivals and education, community gardens, health education, and much more. In 2015, the program granted approximately $210,000 to nearly 60 projects. We're anticipating similar numbers in 2016. We're currently in the process of reviewing those grants, and we're happy to say that we got 140 applications for nearly $1 million. So demand for the program continues to be very strong. Other financial partners are Columbus Foundation, PNC Bank, and we're happy to say for the past several years, the City of Columbus. In addition to funding, all of our partners offer help with grant questions, technical assistance, grant review process, and promotion of the program. Any interested parties may contact Jennifer King at Jennifer.King@UWCentralOhio.com, or .org, sorry, or she can be reached at 614-227-8715.
Thank you for sharing that, Ryan. I mean, obviously, we're providing $19,400, but of course, all the other partners are so important to this particular program.
Absolutely.
And it is, again, a program that's focused on the neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
And helping the neighborhoods to continue to be the best neighborhoods for people to live in. So just appreciate your work at the United Way and running the Neighborhood Partnership Grants Program.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I want to take one second.
Sure.
We'll break for one second.
And my colleague, Carrie Almasy, is going to talk a little bit about Tax Time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, as Ryan mentioned, my name's Carrie Almasy, and I'm the Director of Tax Time. I want to echo Ryan's thank you for the support of Columbus City Council, and specifically, Councilmember Tyson. The council has been a really strong partner in our work since they really played a key role in founding the Coalition back in 2006. So we really appreciate your continued support. Our mission is to provide the Central Ohio community with free, high-quality tax assistance services and access to financial resources that enable low and moderate income families to achieve financial stability. We are an umbrella organization of three different free tax preparation programs operated by United Way of Central Ohio, the Ohio Association of Food Banks, and AARP. Together, we operate more than 60 free tax preparation sites here in Franklin County. And last year alone, we prepared close to 19,000 returns for local households, saving them more than $7 million in tax preparation fees. For many families in our community, tax season is a really important financial moment because various tax credits can combine to form a refund that it can account for up to 45% of their annual income. So we really want to make sure that we are helping clients in this windfall save a portion of their tax refund and spend a portion wisely, so that we can leverage that tax moment and really provide access to key financial resources and knowledge that will help them take the first steps towards financial stability. The program is supported by a diverse group of financial partners. In addition to the council, these partners range from county and federal government sources to corporate sponsors and local banking institutions. Appointments for free tax assistance are scheduled by calling Hands-on Central Ohio at 211. Households that earned under $62,000 in 2015 can also visit myfreetaxes.com and find for free anytime from the comfort of their own homes. Also, we are a volunteer-driven initiative. We recruit and train about 500 individuals to prepare taxes every year. So if you're interested in helping us out in a tax capacity or otherwise, please visit TaxTimeCentralOhio.org.
Carrie, thank you for coming down. This is such a critical program for the residents of the City of Columbus. And I mentioned it at, I think, two weeks ago at my, at the council hearing, we'll mention it again at the next hearing, because we want individuals to take advantage of this program. It has the ability to, again, to save them tremendous dollars, allow them to receive dollars back, and certainly, I know that through the program, how to use, how to, when they get those returns, how to use those dollars wisely. So this is a great program, and can you, again, well, you just shared how to do this, but please, I'll make an announcement at our next council meeting, because we still have until April the 18th.
Yes.
And we want to make sure that these individuals are taking advantage of this wonderful program.
Yes. So we are only approximately halfway through tax season, so people have plenty of time to still call 211, come in and file their taxes for free.
Thank you. And the city is providing $24,250 for this service. Thank you so much for coming down. Hey, Dr. Ginn, and we have two programs that we're generally talking about tonight. Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay. President Pro Tem Tyson and distinguished guests, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Dr. Jeanne Ginn, and I'm the Executive Director for Columbus Early Learning Centers. For those of you that are not familiar with us, CELC was founded in 1887 here in Columbus, Ohio, with the goal of helping Central Ohio's working families and those families that may fall into the gap when it came to resources available to them for their, for support in childcare services. Each year, CELC serves some 150 children in Central Ohio, and most of the children are residents of the Near East Side, or the 43203 and 43205 ZIP codes. And the majority of our families make less than $29,000 per year. CELC is a United Way member agency, a participant in the Early Start Columbus Program and the Early Head Start Program, and we also work with other organizations like the Ohio State University, National Church Residences, Broad Street Presbyterian Church, Central Community House, and Community Properties of Ohio to collaborate and connect families to the services that we do not offer. CELC receives two grants from the Human Services Funding, and one grant provides tuition grants for families who do not qualify for any type of childcare benefit but cannot afford full-day tuition. The other grant provides monies for CELC to provide developmentally appropriate programming and screenings to enrich the lives of the students that we serve. The programming focuses on skill-building opportunities in the areas of nutrition, physical activity, and the development of fine and gross motor skills and language and reading skills. The additional programming and assessments provided through this grant support the efforts of all of our teachers in providing a wide range of educational opportunities for some of the neediest children in Columbus. To further explain the impact of these grants on CELC families, there are two stories that represent the successes we are able to achieve with the City of Columbus's support. A significant part of the Health and Wellness Grant, as we have named it, we use to contract with Columbus Speech and Hearing to provide speech and hearing assessments for all of our children. From the screenings this year, we identified 10 students that needed further evaluation. And one of the success stories from this referral was a three-year-old whose mother followed up on the referral and found that the child actually needed hearing aids. She has since been fitted with those hearing aids and started wearing them in November. Her speech development has progressed exponentially since having her hearing aids, and she is now a chatty Cathy, for sure. She is also attending an intensive speech and hearing program a half a day for five days a week, and then she attends CELC still in the afternoon. The grant also helps us to provide fine and gross motor skill development activities and is part of the programming that is now underway at the Champion Intergenerational Center. In regards to our scholarship, or our step-up scholarships, as we call them, another family's story that explains our successes is Kamora, sorry, is Tiffany. Kamora, Tiffany's daughter, has been a student at Columbus Early Learning Centers since 2011. Tiffany came to us when she was in school and qualified for Title 20, and since then, Tiffany has graduated from college, began work, and is excelling in her job, and with her most recent promotion, became, or did not qualify for Title 20. But she was still not making enough to provide the private pay fees that her childcare would need to, that she would need to pay for childcare. Her payments would have gone from her PFCC co-pay of $70 to $155 a week. This was, Tiffany was really excited when she learned that Columbus Early Learning would receive the Early Start Columbus funding, since her daughter would be going to kindergarten next fall. However, there would be an eight-week gap between the ESC funding and the termination of her benefits. Without the support and assistance provided by this grant, Tiffany would have been faced with the difficult decision to either not accept the promotion, quit work, or have to provide care somewhere else for her daughter and take her from the place that she had known since she was six weeks old. Instead, we were able to give her a step-up scholarship for those eight weeks where Tiffany could pay still her $70 per week for childcare until the Early Start Columbus funding started. This allowed Tiffany to continue work, take the promotion, and still know that her daughter was in a safe, loving educational environment that would prepare her for kindergarten. If someone would like to learn more about Columbus Early Learning Centers and the programs that we provide to children, they can visit our website at columbaseralelearning.org or by calling 614-253-5525. And our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Ginn, for coming in and certainly sharing those two stories. I think they're very important to people to realize that, how these programs are all really touching lives, and for this young person to be able to get hearing aids, because you are, your funding requires you to do speech and health screening, speech and hearing screenings. And so, to be able to do that, you were able to identify what this young child needed, as well as, you said, you have other students at the services they may need also. So this, those hearing aids have changed that young girl's life.
Yes.
And certainly, we know at that age, it's so important, whether they're learning to read, and that's key, with all three-year-olds are in these programs, and so it's key. So that's a great success story, as well as the step-up scholarships. And that was why this was created, because we know that there's a period of time where individuals lose the ability for their children to, again, be in the early learning centers, which then, which then prevents them from getting the skills they need to be able to be ready to go to kindergarten and move forward. So thank you for coming down, both of your programs. The first, the Wellness Program is for, the funding is $29,100, and the Step-Up Scholarships is $28,852.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks.
Stephanie Reed, the Director of Children's Programs from the YWCA. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Reed, the Director of Children's Programs with the YWCA Columbus. On behalf of the people we serve and our staff and board members, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak about the important work our organization does to strengthen our community. The YWCA is dedicated to eliminating racism and empowering women for 130 years this year. We have provided programming and services that address critical needs in our community in the areas of housing, childcare, women's leadership, equality, and racial justice. We are fortunate to be a recipient of the City of Columbus Human Services Funding that supports our Safe and Sound Childcare Program for homeless children in our YWCA Family Center. This program serves children six- This program serves children six weeks to five years old and is dedicated to helping children improve developmental skills such as language acquisition, fine and gross motor skills, self-help skills, and social emotional development. Additionally, we provide after-school care for children in kindergarten through sixth grade. The after-school program focuses on promoting children's healthy, social, emotional development, as well as providing learning opportunities that help them maintain their academic growth and development while their parents are searching for housing and employment. We know how important high-quality early education provides, programs are for children experiencing homelessness. According to the National Center on Family Homelessness, children experiencing homelessness are sick four times more often than other children. They have nutritional deficiencies. They have three times the rate of emotional and behavioral problems compared to non-homeless children. And also, they are four times more likely to show developmental delays. In 2015, with the support of the City of Columbus, we served 406 children. Over 50% of those children who participated in the Safe and Sound Program for at least 10 days showed significant increase in their developmental skills. And 100% of our families said that our, in our school-age program, reported that because of our program existed, they were able to, to do the work necessary to gain stable housing. We are also know that families who receive both housing and youth program services are 15% more likely to have successful housing outcomes than those who, who receiving housing assistance alone. Our other financial partners are the United Way of Columbus, the City, the City of Columbus Department of Education, Franklin County Department of Job and Family Services, as well as the Columbus Foundation. The partners that assist us in providing supplemental services are Head Start, St. Fam, St. Vincent's Family Center, other childcare centers across central Ohio, Action for Children, and Franklin County Jobs and Family Services. To learn more information about our programs, you can call the YWCA at 614-224-9121, or look us up on the internet at YWCA Columbus.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down, Ms. Reed. And so, I know your goal was to reach 120 kids.
Correct.
I think that's what it was, to be enrolled for a minimum of 10 days. You said you've already reached 406 children.
Correct.
Is that correct? And that's partly because of, certainly, I know that the Y, the YWCA Family Center was certainly running a lot of, you know, overcapacity for
Yeah.
a significant period of time.
Correct.
But, again, I thank you for the work that you're doing. I know this grant is for $73,760, and I appreciate the statistics you gave us about homeless children and why this program is so important to keep moving them forward. So thank you again for coming down and sharing your successes.
Thank you very much.
Alli Kisker, Program Assistant from the Buckeye Region, from Bravo, Buckeye Region Anti-Violence. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk this evening. So I'm here representing the Buckeye Region Anti-Violence Organization, which is also known as Bravo, and we are the only LGBTQI anti-violence organization in Columbus and also statewide in Ohio. Based on census data, we are estimating that about 43,000 residents in Franklin County are LGBTQI identified, and it's probably likely that it's actually higher than that. Annually, Bravo tracks about 100 incidents of hate and bias violence, as well as over 30 cases of intimate partner violence. So what we've done with our funding from the City of Columbus is we've actually expanded our safety outreach program. So Bravo was established in 1996, and we've actually been providing an LGBTQI-specific self-defense class for almost 20 years. With the funding that we received through this grant, we were actually able to provide that class three times in this last grant period. Something else really exciting that we've been able to do is we've established an LGBTQI-specific youth safety summit. As you've heard today from some other organizations, we have some really great youth organizations who are doing work, meeting youth's basic needs. And so what we saw was an opportunity to bring LGBTQI youth together, to talk about safety from their perspective. What does that mean to them? What does that look like? And what do they need? What resources do they need to feel safe in their community? But also to give them opportunities to meet the leaders in our community, as well as to start establishing their own roles of leadership in the community. So we first established this in 2013. We had another youth safety summit last October, and we have one starting tomorrow. So that's really exciting. Through our grant, we said that we would reach 50 youth, and we, I would think by the time we closed the grant, we've almost doubled that number. And so through that youth safety summit program, youth come together, and they really get to start developing projects. And so some projects that have come out of that, we've had youth who've worked on sexual health curriculum through Columbus Public Schools. We've had youth organize drag shows that are for youth and by youth. We've had youth who have taken over the Teen Village at Pride and really made that area what it is that they want it to be. The majority of our funding for this program comes from the City of Columbus. However, we do have some private donors, we have some foundation money, and we're excited that for 2016, Otterbine has actually partnered with us to provide some financial support for us to provide programming to them. So that's exciting. As far as our program collaborators, we partner with Stonewall Columbus, Kaleidoscope Youth Center, and also Columbus Public Health.
All right. Thank you. And so your grant is for $29,100, and very much appreciate that you're working with our youth and that you, like you said, you're almost going to double that goal for 2016. And you also, I think your primary goal was to work with 150 adults to participate in programming, and you're on, are you on track to hit that goal?
We are. We are a little bit under. I think that the rain last year for Pride has kind of mixed up our numbers a bit, but we, if we fall short, it's going to be just a wee bit, and so we're definitely looking at how we can increase those numbers for next year.
Okay. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
And our next speaker would be from NetCare, NetCare Access, Carrie Warwick.
Warwick.
How are you?
I am good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
President Protem Tyson, thank you so much for your support and the support of the City Council. I'm speaking in regards to NetCare Access's program, Community Crisis Response. Imagine that you're fixing dinner for your family. You're helping your children with their homework at the dinner table and greeting your spouse who has just returned from work. Suddenly, shots ring out. You tell your family to get down. You hear shouts and sirens. Outside, there are crowds of your neighbors, huddled, buzzing with questions about what, what has just happened. You discover a horrific event has occurred. You discover that your neighbor has crossed the street to your friend's house, shot the family, and then was stopped by the police. NetCare's Community Crisis Response was there, on the scene, talking with you and your neighbors, offering comfort, guidance, resources, and assistance, helping you gather the emotional resources to figure out what steps to take next. The counselor is there immediately after the traumatic event, helping those in the community to get through their own grief while answering concerns for others who may have been affected. Thanks to the City of Columbus grant, this program improves Columbus residents' access to immediate mental health clinicians immediately after a tragedy. This program allows the first responders time to focus on their own duties while the survivors' mental health needs are managed by professionals on site. The CCR clinicians are also instrumental in triaging crisis calls throughout the day when they're not dispatched to a call-out within the community. CCR clinicians are on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They respond in person to the scene within one hour from the time that the request is made from first responders. NetCare has been providing this high-quality service for 34 years. Since the start of the grant in July of 2015, NetCare's Community Crisis Response has responded to 55 incidents, assisting 342 survivors of fires, homicides, suicides, infant deaths, child deaths, and other traumatic events. Since the inception, the grant-funded clinicians have answered 2,661 calls to NetCare's crisis line, attending to callers seeking help with suicidal or mentally ill individuals, or seeking services for themselves or those close to them. According to our outcomes, we have responded to 100% of requests made by law enforcement. We started this program 34 years ago, but with the grant funding, we were able to bring on two full-time clinicians, so we could expand this to the entire City of Columbus. We have provided
(beep).
and trained 321 first responders and built relationships, spending 205 hours with first responders, fire, and police in building that relationship. And we fully intend to increase our utilization in the upcoming year. Our other financial partners in this effort come from the Franklin County Alcohol and Drug and Mental Health Board, which uses tax levy funds to support services for the uninsured. Our other partners that assist in providing supplemental services include Mount Carmel Crime and Trauma, Columbus Fire, Columbus Police, area agencies, and hospitals. If anyone would like to hear more information about NetCare's Community Crisis Response Program, they're welcome to give me a call. Carrie Warwick, Director at NetCare, 276-2273, or Helen Steppian, Manager of Community Services, at the same number.
Thank you, Carrie. So just, just for our viewing and listening audience, and just for a note also, so when an incident occurs and you can respond within hours, an hour's time, and tell me, what's the normal, if there is a normal, period that you may work with, and work with the individuals based upon the situation that has occurred?
Every single situation is different. It's always a tragedy, it's always a very excruciating, extremely intense situation, the worst day in an individual's life, and in the family history, usually. We are there within an hour, and we can spend anywhere from two hours to four or five hours right there on, on the site, in the rain, in the snow, in the middle of the night, helping these individuals get through, planning the, what to do the next, for the next few days, resources that are available to them, helping them cope with grief, helping them with psychological first aid in, in planning how to respond. We also offer ourselves as a resource to the officers and to fire to help in any way mitigate the effects of these tragedies on their efficiency and on their well-being.
And so typically, this is, so as soon as police or fire are somewhere, they'll give you a call, and you guys come right out within the hour and take care of that situation.
Exactly.
And so, just, so if individuals still feel that they need support after
Right.
that time, you still are able, have the ability to work with them?
Yes. We, we usually do follow-up calls, and we link them with services that can maintain a relationship with them on an ongoing basis.
Well, thank you. And your grant is, again, for the, for the two individuals, the crisis responders, for $138,300. And just really thank you for that, for the work that you do, because everyone has seen on television when someone's, when they've lost the loss of a home through fire, or you see just tragic situations that hap, that occur in individuals, households, and you see family members that are there. That, we're appreciative that NetCare and the crisis response team will be out there to kind of help those families through that difficult time.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker. However, we do have one speaker, speaker slip, and I'm going to ask Mr. Rob Alexander to come to the podium. Please come forward. Good evening, Rob.
President Protem Tyson. Last week, the Human Service Chamber of Franklin County released its new public policy agenda, which laid out 19 ambitious goals that our members said that we needed to accomplish in order to make Columbus the best place in the country to live, work, and raise a family. The 50-plus human service agencies that we represent stand ready and willing to work across agency lines to tackle the kind of complex systemic issues that just can't be addressed by a single entity. The Human Service Chamber is requesting funds to address two of those 19 challenges that I just mentioned, economic segregation and disconnected youth. As many people in this room may know, Columbus was recently ranked as the second-most economically segregated metro area in the United States. Of course, this begs the question, why? Well, that's what we wanted to, so we're going to be directing an in-depth examination of income segregation in Columbus neighborhoods and developing a multifaceted strategy to address the issue. At the end of the day, our goal is to double the number of low-income households living in high-income neighborhoods over the next 10 years. Now let's talk about disconnected youth, or as they're also called, opportunity youth. These are the 16- to 24-year-olds who are neither in school nor working. While overall unemployment rates in Franklin County have dropped dramatically in recent years, unemployment rates of 16- to 24-year-olds who are not in school hasn't even budged. The Human Service Chamber aims to reduce the number of disconnected youth by 25% over the next five years by developing education and employment strategies that address their unique needs and build on their unique assets. In the end, we'll prevent kids from dropping out, increase the number of people completing their GED, and remove some of the barriers that prevent them from being hired, such as a lack of soft skills, an inability to pass a drug test, and transportation challenges. Last year's grant allowed us to hire a full-time member services staff person, which helped build the visibility of the chamber. It allowed us to provide training to our members on social enterprise and the development of new business lines to make them more self-sustaining, and it helped us to create this public policy agenda that we just released last week. I want to thank you for your longstanding support of the human service sector, and especially for the resources that you've directed to our member agencies. Let me also say that we are extremely grateful for the grant that you provided to the Human Service Chamber last year. The Chamber itself is a small organization, and in all honesty, city funding allowed us to, to double our impact. It made a tremendous difference in our effectiveness as an organization, and I think Columbus is better off because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for the work that you're doing. And certainly, I had the opportunity to attend the, the rollout of your strategic plan, and certainly, it is, I think it was, first of all, I think the, the event was well-attended, but also, the strategic plan of the organization is certainly one that will showcase the work of the Human Service Chamber, Organize, Human Service Chamber, and the organizations in which you represent, the 50 nonprofit organizations, and hope, it set out the, the plan for you, for you to be able to, to meet some strategic needs in our community, and I'm excited that you guys have put that plan together. It was a well-thought-out plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I adjourn, I'd like to thank the leadership staff and volunteers of the organizations who joined us today. Let me just never forget that you are doing some of the most noble work in our community. I'm grateful to the service of these organizations. I admire each and every one of you for your compassion and your tenacity to serve this community. As stated earlier, our next hearing for these organizations that did not present this evening will be on March 16th at 3:30 PM. If you'd like more information on the organizations that will be presenting, please call my office at 614-645-2932. As we conclude this hearing, I also want to thank the following people. Melinda Frank from the Auditor's Office, who presented this evening on upcoming legislation. I also want to thank, I see, Hannah Reed, and I want to also thank Mr. Kim Stans, who works closely with these nonprofit organizations that serve our works closely with these nonprofit organizations that serve our organization. And of course, Ms. Hannah Jones for being here. They're all from the Department of Development. I always want to thank the professionals at CTV, who worked so hard to prepare for this hearing and the broadcast of my committee hearings. Then the Legislative Research Office, specifically Andrew Dyer, who staffs the Health and Human Services Committee, and he was instrumental in putting this hearing together, so thank you very much, Andrew. I also want to thank my team, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, and I see that also. I want to also recognize Ms. Nancy Sully, who is, works within Columbus City Council in the Office of Community Outreach. And so I'm sure she's learned a lot more about the organizations, but she knows a lot already, so she'll be able to help more residents in our community. And I want to thank my fellow council members who were here this evening, but also those who could not be here for the work that they do each and every day to serve the residents of our community. And lastly, I want to always thank the residents of this community for allowing us to be able to serve you each and every day. You are, you make this community a wonderful community, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to work for you each day. And so with that, I will conclude the hearing, and everyone have a safe trip home. Thank you, and good night.